Good afternoon, everyone. I hereby call this a special meeting of Nakadocha's ISD board trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum is present and notice of this meeting was posted as required by Texas Open Meeting Act. Board member Mr. James Montoya unable to attend today's meeting. Dr. Roman have dentist and another doctor's appointment in Loughkin. And Ms. App this morning start acting say ill actually. Please remember that the items do not have to be taken in order as it has been listed. The board now will conduct an executive close session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provision of Texas Open Meeting Act and as allowed by Texas government code sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as the result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes into open session. Time now is 1:02 PM. The board now reconvening into open session and time is 1:16 PM. Okay, at this time we have public portion, this is portion of public comments and we have one request to address to board. Ms. Catherine, Daniel.
Mike, you got the time?
Ms. Daniel, as usual, you have three minutes' time and Mr. Michael Martin takes the time.
Great, I have a question before you start the time. I would like for you to please consider giving me the same respect that you gave Ms. McLeary and another speaker when they went over time during last month's board meeting.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I would respectfully request-
Yes.
-that if I go over time-
I hear you. I don't have to go-
I'm sorry, what?
You don't have to go word by word, just tell me one more time, I didn't hear you that well.
Okay. I respectfully request that if I go over time-
Yes, ma'am.
-you will grant me the same respect that you gave Mrs. McLeary and another speaker, Ms. Winslow. I really like your attention, please. The same respect to go over the time that you allowed those two speakers during last month's meeting. I'm ready for you to start the timer.
Good.
Good afternoon. I am here today to specifically appeal to your human decency, your patriotism, and your oath of office. It states, "To the best of my ability, I will preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state." In Article VI of our Constitution, it is explicit, "This Constitution shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby." Amendment I in our Constitution's Bill of Rights was explicit, "Our government may not make any law representing," excuse me, "our government may not make any law respecting an establishment of religion." The Supreme Court has continuously upheld that it is unconstitutional for government to aid religion-
Ms., Ms., Ms. Daniel, this is a special meeting-
Yes, sir.
-that serves that for public comment during the regular board meetings.
No, I'm addressing Agenda 5A, the hiring of the superintendent.
Okay.
If you will allow me to finish my public comment, you will see, if you pay attention.
Okay, I pay attention and I didn't realize where you were going.
I don't appreciate you interrupting me, President Fosch.
Well, okay, cool, follow them. Go ahead, your time.
You don't do that to other people that speak that you agree with.
If I did not realize it, I would not do it. Therefore, give her the times.
Yes, sir.
Back to our Amendment I in our Bill of Rights. "Our government may not make any law respecting an establishment of religion." The Supreme Court has continuously upheld that it is unconstitutional for government to aid religions such as funding religious schools or passing laws that favor one religion over another. It also prohibits government from creating an atmosphere that coerces individuals into religious practices against their will. Earlier this summer, they upheld that again by ruling that Oklahoma cannot use public funds to operate a Christian-based public school. Prior to that ruling, they also developed in this, I believe, 1971, the Lemon Test, which prevents the government from creating any law without secular purpose. You see from these facts that while many of our founding fathers were Christians, they understood and insisted Americans be free from government interference in religion of any kind. So, we have established that the Constitution, which each of you swore or affirmed to protect, prohibits each of you individually and as a body from, one, following state laws that are unconstitutional because federal law is the supreme law of the land; two, establishing board policies or hiring staff that promote one religion over another; three, creating environments that may pressure or coerce individuals to practice religion against their will; and four, enforcing or promoting any law or policy that is not secular in purpose. The same Constitution that prohibits you all from those actions is the reason Louisiana's passage of a law forcing all classrooms to post the Ten Commandments was never enacted. The precedents are clear, and a simple Internet search would have saved us, the taxpayers, tens of thousands that you spent on a firm to find your loan finalist, a candidate who has proven to violate the Constitution in Rusk ISD, who went even further and told those asking him to follow the law of our land to go to hell. Your three minutes does not provide me time to prevent, to present the evidence, but like I said, an Internet search will provide you with the facts-
Ms. Daniel, your message-
-not rumors.
Your message-
No, sir, you allowed others to go past the time, it's on record-
I do not recall that. As soon as the buzzer comes out, I stop it.
Because then pull up the, pull up the video and watch it. You're allowed to take a break and do that, sir. You don't like me personally-
Well, you're taking your own-
-that's why you won't let me speak like you let Ms. McLeary speak after the time.
You're taking your own time. See with items from discussion on action portion of agenda, which is consideration of hiring a superintendent of schools.
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to move that the Nacogdoches Independent School District hired Gray Burton as its superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2025.
Mr. President, I second.
Okay, I, Dr. Tyrell Roman is not in attendance, however, forwarded an email. He says, "I am unable to attend a special meeting on June 10th secondary to health reasons we as discussed. I am in agreement that NISD board hiring Mr. Gray Burton as the next superintendent." Now those who made the second, all those in favor of Mr. Burton to be our superintendent in future, raise your hands up. Ms. Brady?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Traitors. You don't have to arrest me, I'm leaving.
Have a good day. At this time, I, ladies and gentlemen of the board, as we all aware that our colleague, Mr. James Mantoya, on dealing with his personal issues for some times. Regretfully, he have decided to relinquish himself from the NISD Board of Trustees. Mr. Mantoya was elected on May of 2017 as a representative with District III and has served NISD Board of Trustees as secretary for one terms and four terms as board vice presidents. On behalf of NISD Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank Mr. Mantoya for his commitment to his advocacy, his concern for health, safety, and salary of all NISD employee, and the quality of education that NISD students deserve to receive, as well as his passion and advocacy for social workers and the job that they are performing. I say again, thank you, Mr. Mantoya, for your friendship and your dedication to your cause, and best wishes, and God bless.
Mr. President, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Mantoya as well and give him the assurance that we won't forget about the social workers.
Okay, with that said, this meeting adjourned.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, and you said bye?
Bye.
We are adjourned.